Good morning. I'm happy to welcome my fellow board members and the public and call the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one special school board meeting to order. This is a business meeting of the board held in the public. As such, the board is authorized to adopt rules or policies to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in a public meeting. Please note that your presence here is subject to those rules and policies. Pursuant to Florida statute eight seven seven point one three, it is unlawful and a misdemeanor of the second degree punishable by up to sixty days in jail and a five hundred dollar fine for any person knowingly to disrupt or interfere with the lawful administration or functions of any educational institution or school board, or knowingly to advise, counsel, or instruct any school pupil or school employee to disrupt any school or school board function or activity on school board property. To facilitate a cooperative environment for all, please be aware of the following. The appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer. I will ask persons deemed to be knowingly or intentionally disrupting this meeting of the school board of Brevard County who are not complying with the policy to stop or leave. If persons receiving the warning choose not to follow my instructions, I will instruct Brevard County Sheriff's deputies to take any law enforcement action they deem appropriate, and you may be escorted, detained, or arrested depending on the conduct. Persons who refuse to depart after a warning may also be committing the crime of trespassing in accordance with Florida statute section eight one zero point zero eight. These statutes apply to conduct on all school board property, which includes this boardroom, as well as the outside of this building to the sidewalks. If you continue to cause a disruption, you are advised that you are in violation of Florida state statute eight seven seven point one three, or if you fail to leave the premises after being warned by the sheriff's office, you are committing trespass, and the board has authorized the sheriff's office to enforce these rules. In the event multiple individuals fail to adhere to these expectations and board business cannot continue due to disruption, I will call a recess and request that the law enforcement officers present clear the boardroom of attendees. When the room is cleared, the board will return and resume their meeting with no public present. Those who are signed up to speak will be seated under the front entry area and called in when it is your time to speak. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougall.
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan. And Mrs. Campbell.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Belford and members of the board, on this morning's agenda, there's an action item on the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund under the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARP. Also, there's a discussion item added under the superintendent's report. The only change made to the agenda since it was released on Thursday, November fourth, is the addition of the discussion item regarding the two thousand and twenty-one twenty-two school calendar amendment to allow all district offices and schools to close the week of Thanksgiving.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please, you have discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask. So we're allowing, just for the public, Monday and Tuesday, all employees to go home. Transportation custodian.
The motion is to approve the agenda.
Okay, all right, yeah, let's go.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor to approve the, or to adopt the agenda. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes five. Four. Four zero. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. All right. We are now going to be at public comment. We have two speakers this morning. Both on the action item on the agenda. Per policy zero one six nine, public petition, participation at board meetings, we are limited to ten speakers. We only have two, so both speakers will get three minutes. And I am going to move up there to run the clock for the speaker, so if you all will bear with me as I move. If you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. We will have a clock behind me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement. When time is up, it's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. All right, before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing. Our first speaker is Sarah. Sarah, if you would like to.
Ms. Belford, just so we don't have backs to the speakers, would you mind if we allow them to come to the table and use the microphone here?
Yeah, that's right.
I don't know, if we need them, mic in the magic room back there.
Becky's shaking her head no, that we're good to do that here.
I just, Mr. Gibbs and I don't particularly want to have our backs to the speakers, so.
And Sarah, Mr. Susan's running your clock.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I'm Sarah Merzke, wife, mother, student, registered voter, taxpayer, stakeholder from District Two. A huge thank you to all our vets for their service and sacrifice. I want to thank the board for finally coming into compliance with the DOE and, most importantly, giving parents the right to choose to mask their child or not. The choice should have always been the parents all along. What a very interesting couple of weeks that has been for the BPS board. I wonder how many more lawsuits are going to pile up against the school board for recent illegal policies and how much our tax money is having to be paid out to defend the board. I sincerely hope the board starts to build relationships with all parents and take their fiduciary responsibilities seriously. Part of the reason why we are seeing record inflation is due to all the money that BPS is receiving in SR funds. So many families are making financial sacrifices at the gas pump and grocery stores. Please use our tax money wisely. Now on to the actual SR funds. We definitely need to repair air conditioners across the district. My son had to wear a mask in class with no AC. Would like to know how you're trying to keep my child safe in that scenario without trying to suffocate him and others. It was ninety-five plus degrees that day outside. I can't imagine what the classroom temperature was. One thing that all parents can agree on, on all sides of the mask issue, is better air filtration. We need hospital-grade air filters in our classrooms. We need more teachers, and our remaining teachers need to be compensated better. As I mentioned before, one of the ways to retain the teachers you have is not to mandate masks or vaccines. We need more mental health professionals in schools so that children can get the services they need. I like the idea of having Thanksgiving week off. However, I think it would be great for next year. It would be just too disruptive for too many families to try to scramble to find childcare and make arrangements for this year. I ask that the board stop bringing their own personal grievances and politics to the dais and work together in a nonpartisan way. My son brought up a great point last week as we were discussing those in elected office. He reminded us of a simple saying from Spider-Man. Uncle Ben told Peter Parker, "With great power comes great responsibility." Simple yet profound. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Delaney? Okay. All right, Mr. Susan, I think you're done up there then, sir. All right, Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our action item?
Item G six is to approve the development and submission of funding opportunities under the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund under the American Rescue Plan ARP Act grant proposal.
Do I have a motion?
Let's go approve.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes four zero. All right, Dr. Mullins, if you would please go over the item and the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring to the board this morning a discussion that I've had with senior cabinet, as well as administrators across the district, and with respect to a very, very unique opportunity that we have kind of this moment in time. As the board knows, we've had a very, very challenging school year already. Certainly during the spike of the coronavirus Delta variant, where we were experiencing hundreds, if not thousands, of students and staff members COVID positive, but also thousands of quarantines providing a tremendously disruptive impact on our schools. Coupled with the nationwide workforce shortage, where our schools and clearly across the entire organization, no function of Brevard Public Schools operates in isolation without having translating and cascading impact on our schools and the support, as well as the services we can provide our students, our teachers, and as well as our parents. So the nationwide workforce shortage has certainly impacted our district tremendously, not in our classrooms, but also across all departments and divisions. And the impact or the reality is, is our team members doing an amazing job of standing in the gap in those instances. Teachers covering classrooms in many cases, days of the week at a time, as well as picking up dropped bus routes, covering stations and our food service departments, but also our maintenance workers, our air conditioning technicians that are shorthanded, our mechanics in our shops picking up and covering for everyone else. It's been a very challenging year, and I'm not suggesting that Brevard Public Schools is unique to the challenges. Certainly, every district in the state of Florida, if not the country, have experienced the same kinds of difficulties. I've said before that life has not given us any breaks, along with the unprecedented, I'll say, era of a pandemic, a global pandemic. And the emotional and mental health strain on our employees is certainly real, and it has certainly been compounded, given everything that we've gone through. This year, in addition, is unique. Fortunately, I can, you know, we can all reflect and say we did not face a demanding hurricane season this year. Can't say that always, but this year we can. Yes, thank goodness. The board understands that our school calendar is very, very tight. It is very, quite frankly, restrictive. We have one of the shorter school days of school calendars across the state, which really limits flexibility. The board knows in the past when we have experienced a hurricane day closure, it has required a lot of adjustments to the calendar to meet our statutory instructional requirements and our credit-earning course instructional minutes. And we've done the best we can. In some cases, we've had to even make up school days in years past. Given we've not faced that and our administrators' willingness to make some flexible adjustments to bell schedules, particularly at our secondary schools, we have an opportunity to, this year, to close our schools Monday, Tuesday of Thanksgiving. It would provide that extended opportunity for our staff and our families across the district to have that time together. It certainly is one of the most popular, most persistent asks of our community, of our employees, when we work on our school calendar, but due to the restrictions of when we can start the school year, as well as meeting other commitments, semester and end of year, we've not been able to build that in. Because of no hurricane, we can give that consideration. I want to acknowledge that this is short notice. Recognize that for our community and wish that weren't the case. But we still have this moment in time opportunity to do this for our employees, as well as, I hope, for many families who would seek to use this as time to come together, rebuild, renew, revive as a family unit. But we also recognize there are some families in many difficult situations, work demands and so on. I can only come to you with also with this recommendation, knowing that we've already reached out to our community, Parks and Recreation. They had planned a day camp available at different locations across the district. On the Wednesday, we were going to be closed anyway. We've talked with them. They're prepared to look at extending that for the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, to make some additional childcare opportunities available to our parents and our families. In addition, you know, this is a time when we can call on our community. And our community has always come to our aid, and I'm proud to be a Brevardian. I, I'm pleased to say we have, I would suggest a wonderful relationship with our faith-based community. They have a strong representation in the superintendent's community ambassadors. I made a phone call last, in the last couple of days, to Jarvis Wash, who is a pastor in central Brevard, pastor of the Real Church, and several community-wide initiatives as well. And I said, Jarvis, I need your help. Parks and Rec may be able to do some things, but I really think this is an opportunity for our faith-based community to come alongside us and say, we're willing to look at what could we do as well. And he said, absolutely. Let's pull them together. In fact, I have a meeting with Pastor Wash and some faith-based leaders this afternoon to talk about what might our faith-based community be able to provide families as well. And they're willing to look at that in support of our teachers and our staff and our administrators across our district, recognizing the challenge that this year has been already for them. So I'm pleased that to no surprise, like Brevard does, Brevard takes care of Brevard, and we're looking to provide some outlets, some, we don't want to provide additional stress to families certainly during this time, so I'm pleased that we've got these opportunities that are being worked on, and we'll certainly do what we can to communicate those opportunities to families. The other factor that we looked at is, we know we send kids home with food insecurities, on the weekend particularly. Right now, we provide weekend meals. In addition, we are very familiar with Children's Hunger Project. They provide weekend meals to, I think, nearly three thousand children every week. Our food service team has also been providing a weekend food pack, if you will, to nearly twelve thousand students in addition to that. I went to Mr. Thornton. I said, we're trying to, we're considering this. Is there something we can do to not only send a kid home on Friday with three meal snack packs, could we send them home with five on the Friday before Thanksgiving week? And he said, we'll make it happen. So I don't want, I'm not bringing this recommendation of the board without some very careful consideration and thought of the impact across our families. Certainly, I'm aware and striving to meet families where they are and that type of thing, and make sure that we're making a reasonable decision, not only for Brevard Public Schools and our team, who this is well deserved for, but also the impact on our family's community. The recommendation is, is that we close all district and school offices Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of Thanksgiving week, holding employees harmless with pay. They will receive their regular pay on schedule. We would, I would ask for board consensus support for that and would bring back to the board on November sixteenth, next Tuesday's board meeting, a formal calendar amendment that would provide for that. I couldn't bring that today without more public notice, but this could provide the public notice so we can move forward to notify our schools, our families of the intent to bring forward this calendar change, as well as providing support for our community. I'm reminded of one last thing. We do have dual enrollment students in, at Eastern Florida. Dr. Sullivan worked with her high school principals. They are prepared to work with families on a case-by-case basis to support students who may need assistance, you know, getting to Eastern Florida State College. They felt very confidently. They know their kids. They know the circumstances. They can work with them and ensure that we can help them meet their academic responsibility, because Eastern Florida is in session on Monday and Tuesday. Madam Chair, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Do any board members have comments or questions for Dr. Mullins, or Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you for addressing all of the concerns we probably all had probably brought up. I do want to say, I know it is last minute and it's difficult, but I appreciate the thought being thrown out there. You know, there's extreme burnout across all levels of our staff, and it's difficult. for us to reward our staff members when it comes to compensation and financial incentives. And, you know, each and every moment we have to reward them mentally and with time, and time to kind of regroup themselves and come back fresh and rejuvenated, I think it's really important for us to take advantage of that. You know, being a BPS employee myself, it may seem silly to people listening in the public that an extra day or two to yourself to breathe doesn't seem like a big deal, but it absolutely is, especially when it comes around that holiday time and around this halfway point for educators. So, I appreciate you, and I absolutely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. McDougall?
I just want to say, thank you for bringing this forward, and I, it was funny, we just had our calendar meetings for the upcoming calendar, and I did specifically ask this question. Why don't we have the whole week of Thanksgiving? And it is related to our tight, shortened workday, our school day for our students, and we need to get the hours in that's needed. I'm so glad we didn't have hurricanes here and that we will have the ability to offer this to our teachers, because I think, and I agree with what Ms. Jenkins said, and I think we all will, our teachers are stressed. They are doing double duties in many ways. Our admin is working their tails off. I know that people get here at 5:30 and some days don't go home until 11 o'clock at night. So everybody could use a break, and I think this is a great idea. I'm so glad that we were able to bring this forward. Dr. Mullins, thank you.
Mr. Susan?
I agree with your sentiments. One of the things that some of the individuals that are out there that say, that may not support this, because there would be a couple of people out there that wouldn't, I'd ask them to look into the eyes of a teacher who's covering many of the sub vacancies. I'd ask them to look at the bus drivers, look into the eyes of the bus drivers who are sitting there every day trying to put together an attendant sheet, writing it in hand written, and then turning it in and then scanning it, trying to tell the kids to, you know, sit in your seats, put on your mask. People are worn out. Many vacant positions throughout our district are being covered by teachers, too. Principals writing COVID quarantines and tracing and everything else. It's been a long haul. And I think also, a lot of it goes out to the ESF staff who left here during COVID so that we could keep our darn schools open and still keep the responsibility that they have normally. And I think that when you look into the eyes of each one of those individuals, you realize this is much needed. And one of the main reasons I support it is because, you're right, Ms. Jenkins, this is much needed across our, and our people are burnt out. So I applaud Dr. Mullins for bringing this forward. I applaud the staff for all of their hard work, and it's well-deserved across the district. The one question I had was, and you eluded it, I've received emails and everything else about, well, they're telling me that if I have to take it off, I have to take my vacation time or whatever. We're not doing any of that, right? You get the time off, it doesn't hurt your vacation, and it's great. Okay? Hey, this is great, Dr. Mullins. Thank you.
Dr. Mullins, thank you for bringing this forward, and I, you know, we talk a lot about what our team members are going through and the challenge that it's been, and I certainly do not want that to be overshadowed, because I think that's a huge focus for what we're doing here. But I would argue that our students need the break, too. And, you know, and it's been, it's been a tough year for them in many respects with quarantines and, you know, threats and all kinds of things that they've had to deal with, too. And so, I just, I really think this is a win-win, and I thank you for, you know, having the conversations with Cabinet and with us about the concerns that would be brought forward for families and making sure that we can address those concerns and those needs. I will be on the phone with Parks and Rec as soon as we finish here this morning. They are ready to stand up those camps throughout Brevard. Thank them for their partnership and for you being proactive and reaching out to our faith-based community as well. I think, you know, that gives us two really strong solutions for families. And, yeah, it's, we have to take advantage while we can. What Ms. McDougall didn't mention when she was talking about our calendar meeting, and I feel like it's important to put out there, we don't have the opportunity to build this into our calendar typically, because we have a shorter student day in Brevard County, because we have 15 additional minutes of planning every day that other districts don't have. So our student day is shorter because we prioritize that planning opportunity for teachers. And so that's why we can't, given our current structure, build this into our calendar next year or the year after. Hey, hopefully, we get really lucky and we don't have hurricanes next year either, and we can do it again, right? But, but that is the challenge that we face right now. So, I support it. I think it is going to be incredibly beneficial for all of us to just reset. And the only last thing that I will say, and this is my fellow board members, and I'm sure I don't need to say it, but sometimes you say things, because if you don't say them, you get, you know, you wish you had, and that is that you guys have to take those days off, too, and not be emailing our staff. Okay? So that means, that means, Mr. Susan, when you have lots of time on your hands, and Ms. McDougall, and Ms. Campbell, and myself, there is a method for you to schedule your emails to go out later, so if you feel that you must work during break, please schedule that to not go out until the following Monday, so that we can truly, truly give our entire team a break.
How about, how about we just ask you to shut them all down?
Thank you for acknowledging that I don't do that.
What do you think?
Thank you.
No, cheat them, you can just shut the whole district down.
You're welcome, everybody.
And then, and then they'll just pool and they'll get done, because I know the way that some of the directors will work, and they're not going to listen to you, right? They're going to keep going. So Russell, I mean, let's shut it down. Let's just shut the email system down.
Assuming we can turn it back on.
That's kind of important, Russ.
Gets worried every time we shut the system down. Shutting it down is easy. Restarting it, that's the hard part.
Yes. So do you need any further direction from us, Dr. Mullins?
No, I appreciate the clear direction from the Board. We will proceed with communicating with our staff, our community, our parents, as well as our community partners for their already support that they've expressed and certainly express our appreciation of them as well.
And just a point of clarification for our families, as we get information on those childcare opportunities and the logistics of meals and any of those other things that we need to address, we'll be sending that communication out as well.
Yes, Mr. Brune is already on it and has got a schedule to send out information regularly to our family.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. All right. I think that is going to end our meeting, so there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.[1763.61][1763.61]